All, it's Cape Charles Town Council regular meeting from May 21st to order. So roll call please.
Yeah.
And I would...
And here.
President.
Brian President. We have a quorum, thank you. Let us stand for silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Burress.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Council, I'm John Burress, 117 Mason Avenue, and I'm here as the chairman of Cape Charles Christian School to talk to you about the credit to do this best. 2015, which has ended last Saturday, was the best one ever by far. I want to thank the town staff, especially people that didn't teach in the church campus, the town police who were on site, Sheriff, Department of Defense, the citizens of Central Park, who've done a lot for me in ten proper years, because you do today, and they're doing action for the school, and I think they did pretty well, I haven't heard of them. And they did alright. I want to particularly thank Holly Hooker and Debbie Mountain and our staff, and other staff members and their spouses and volunteers, and also the YW teams who did a lot to make this event the best it ever was. Our sponsor, E S Land, Cape Charles Jout Center, developed the janitor, which is a new banner for Rosa, except Travis is the idea, and worked really well. A new event sponsor from Point Beach Financial Security Advisors Inc., vendors who brought good food, and to help call the parents of the family of assault. And just to point out that I don't know anymore about this than you do, sir, but Carol Evans told me that her B and B was booked for people who came just to go to the event. So it's growing reputation and stuff we tend to keep doing every year. We've had several good sports, including Vera Proto, who I got to dunk, buried in her, Jay Brady, Chelsea Piper, who was the chief, seemed very anxious to dunk, but he wasn't anxious to get in the tank himself. Next year, next year, he's promised me he's gonna be in. Russell Good was in there, I was in there. Crowd attendance, made great weather, when I saw the weather forecast without account of what it's gonna be like today, or in the weekend, got better, so great weather. Over 1,100 people attended eventually, and we count our resmaids. So that doesn't count a lot of the volunteers, a lot of people, so I don't know the exact number, but over 1,100. Probably three or four hundred more than we had last year. It's a very big venue, so we split it up so it doesn't look like such a big venue, but even so, it does look roomful lots more. So now the government, we net over $14,000 this year. That's a small portion of our budget operating expenses, our annual operating expenses, but it's very important. It's our latest fundraiser every year as far as events. Now we have a goal of $20,000 for next year, and we expect to be better. Again, as I said, we'll have, the dump tank will be better promoted. We tried it this year just kind of out of the blue, it didn't work well, we netted over $500 for the dump tank. We had a sponsor that paid for the dump tank, it's pretty expensive, and everything we got there was pretty great. So again, thank you, I wanted to give a positive report, the park doesn't see a better use, I don't think, than that event, and people would like that if something positive happened. So if you have any ideas about how to make it better, we're with you, my pleasure. Thank you.
You're welcome. The only thing I'd say, and I don't comment on public comments, but the only thing I'd say, being in the dump tank is a lot of fun, and I think next year you ought to charge people to be in the dump tank. Thank you.
I have one question. And thank you, John, you're one of the, I think the only non-profit in town with an extra money each. And we can bring some ways to try.
We use the town assets a lot, and we don't go back, so you guys know that, so we do try to support town in the ways we can, and we really, again, want to thank Central Park for what they do, to keep the park up, and hope you make very much of that, and not just in this event, but every day, I can say, it's very important asset.
Anyone else?
No one else, thank God.
All right, public comment is closed. I will take a motion to approve the agenda format.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
The agenda format is approved. I would like a motion to approve the minutes, and rather than go through your number in here, rather than go through the minutes usually approved, and I'd like to approve all the minutes for these various meetings at one time. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
All right. Thank you, the minutes are approved. Let's do the Treasury Report text.
Page one, the cash position. Total cash on the end of April was $1,420,935, with a decrease of $168,000 in March. The total restricted or reserved cash was $1,464,200. The second and third quarter facility fees of $25,400 were transferred from operations to the restricted cash account later. Total cash in all accounts as of April 3rd was $2,885,135. And we don't have a debt service payment until July, we don't need $121,964. Any questions, page one? Page two. Budget performance. General fund, year-to-date revenue of $2.14 million, and year-to-date expenses of $1.59 million, for net balance of $554,000. Public utilities fund, year-to-date revenue of $1.37 million, and year-to-date expenses of $1.316 million, for net balance of $54,000. The Harvard fund shows year-to-date revenue of $604,000, and year-to-date expenses of $732,000, for net balance of negative $105,000. And we're closing the gap, it was $135,000 negative at the end of March, so I submit a nays in this month, so it looks like we're very close to a meaningful by the end of June. Sanitation fund shows year-to-date revenue of $146,000, year-to-date expenses of $127,000, for net balance of $19.6,000. Three, capital projects, there's not much to tell, we only dispersed $300 in April, and that's for the Mason Street River and parking area. To date, we're at 45.8% of the capital budget, excluding the trail project. There's quite a bit more project activity going on in May, so you'll see that number grow by the end of this month. Any questions? I also updated it to show the new projects that you approved mid-year, with the budget review section, such as the polling system, the increase in the truck costs, and...
Has the HEB on the second floor of the library been finished?
That's been finished now, it just wasn't paid till right... Real estate tax collections, I changed the formula to, it was picking up percent of total collected per total billed instead of budgeted, so you'll see that number jumped quite a bit. So total, 2004 real estate tax collections were 99% of budget, and personal property, machinery and tools tax, license tax collections were 89% of budget. For prior year real estate tax, personal property, interest and penalty collections, we have 104% of budget.
Thank you. Yeah, doesn't happen very often.
Yeah, enjoy it this year. Next page is a three-year revenue comparison. As you can see, B-hole, real estate taxes and prior year real estate taxes, there's only pretty significant increases over prior years.
And this is in part due to increased focus on collection, or is this because we've had a problem?
More growth, other people, we haven't, we haven't focusing on the collections, but I think most of us grow, but then people are doing well with the bills.
Okay. This all looks pretty good to me, we're either roughly even or ahead of the game, so, good.
I added up page six, before called dessert, I'll try to do my, maybe something new, a little focus. This one, we'll look at the transient occupancy tax revenue history. I took the data, this is over the past three years, I took it from our TOT database and off the general ledger, so it reflects what the month that the activity took place, so the people were actually here staying, not when they collected the money. I thought that might give you a more accurate picture of the growth. As you can see, every year is better, better, every year, it looks like the season is more, is extended, it looks like we've become a holiday destination, you can see in November and December, those numbers have increased a little.
Mm-hmm.
There are more people coming, and there's someone that often. Was it festival in October 2013?
Yeah, Freddy Festival.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was, yeah, the 12th festival. There was a good jump there. Every $1,000 in TOT revenue represents $33,332 rental income to the homeowner. After January 2015, of course, the rate went up, so every thousand intact for $7,000 in revenue for the homeowner. So that's a good thing. Any questions like that?
How are you wanting to find out concerning your homes? Or do you contact people, or you...
We just finished budget, so next week is sending out letters, I have a list of sending out letters next week.
No rest, probably.
No, you're just going to a new pile.
One question, and I don't know if you can have it, but I was wondering what has happened to places like Mason Avenue, suffering, are they declining, or the results of us?
Well, no, we're not that much of a dent, and that's a good question. I know I've talked to several people, just even vendors on the phone, one of them that swears that's a picture of his family on our town website, that they were down a couple years ago, but a lot of them say they didn't, especially from Richmond, that they've talked to people and it's like a little hidden secret, it's close, closer than the outer banks, and the children come here, a lot of people.
I'd love to ask you to know what the situation is and what happened to the, and what we could look forward to in future.
We could ask the management companies if they do exit, or exit surveys, if they'd be willing to share that information with us.
Yeah, I would recommend that.
I could ask them.
I would say from the B and B part, most people come saying, my God, this is different. It's just gonna cha-ching, speak out. Cha-ching, excitement, you're not having drunken parties on the front porch at midnight, people being thrown over, we haven't hanged on through that yet, but please keep it on the go, but I think the biggest thing is, it's just sort of a little gym. And it's constant, you have people here from Washington State, but first of all, our water is, they really like the old water, Seattle, but it's so quiet, and it's so peaceful, and there's so much to do. I would decide, I'm like, maybe the light cycle to see what people are doing.
Okay. Any other questions? Take a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Treasurers' Report is approved. Next on the agenda, we have the planning question.
Good evening, there's two things I'd like to add to the report, by way of updating information. This morning, the UZA met to discuss the application for variance. This is for an accessory building on a non-conforming lot, the UZA approved that variance to accommodate setbacks to a lot of property owners, but we did not put it... Accessory building on a former site that was within the site and rear setbacks. Also, it's 15-foot difference between primary structure and accessory building, meaning the setback as well, so that property owners receive all those setbacks. Variants for all those setbacks. The other thing, by way of update, on May 19th, the historic district coordinated here, one of the items they considered was brought forth by the public parks director related to the water intrusion on the roof of this building and the chitneys. So the public parks director recommended that the chitneys be removed as an effort to stem the water inflow. The historic board considered that and approved the certificate of appropriateness for this building on a condition that comes to town council, which I do next month, and if it doesn't, we will change that to my report.
Any questions?
Here. I would like to make one thing about the mention of the report and the way you said it was the foreign Methodist church, and it actually was Presbyterian church.
Not going to do it. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Let's see, next we have public force.
I have nothing to add, unless council has any questions for me.
So continuing to be very busy, right?
Very busy. Another, your permit today is permitted based on village.
Okay.
Provincy, so.
Do you, if you look, last year, your total construction was 6.8, almost 6.9 million, this year it's 5.6 year to date. Do you anticipate us getting near what we were last year, or close?
Uh, yeah.
Do you think we'll exceed it? We'll lag the year to exceed it.
I think we'll come pretty close to it.
Pretty close to it.
And, I mean, that number actually isn't a great gauge, because that included the beach club, part of the beach club in that last year.
Gotcha.
So even though we don't look like we're matching it this year, all of our construction to date, this year has been strictly residential stuff.
Okay, it's more permits.
A lot more permits, yeah, a lot more permits, but we're at 4.1, we're at 5.6 million, last year was 6.8 million, there's more houses that Bank Creek's out there to build, we'll be well over that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Good. Any questions for Jim?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Harvard, Town Harvard, steady.
Other than my report, I'm afraid I had Thursday, Tuesday, went to, with a board meeting, and we did get awarded to carry over for $830,000, some odd change dollars.
So you got the permits extended for the regular works too?
Yes, we did.
Good job.
Yep, that's good, very good.
Any questions?
Harvard. I just wanted to hand out our summer schedule, we have two pages of programs this summer, we start June 15th. And we're already seeing an increase in people coming to the library, tourists, and we have people that come in every year, they come to Cape Charles, and every year they come in the library. This woman with five little children, all adopted, came in yesterday, and she said this was their favorite place in Cape Charles when we came last year. So we're already starting to see the influx, so we're expecting to elaborate some. Any questions?
Sounds good.
I think Jeff's program won.
Oh, we, it went great, Monday night, Jeff Holland from the Bridge Tunnel was there, we had 26 people, and it was very informative, hour and a half, we liked a lot, thank you.
Can we, can we advertise this in the B and Bs, do we have to, we put this out here publicly so people know?
Yes, it's everywhere, but we haven't specifically taken it to the B and Bs, but that's a good idea, and Sharon is gonna go visit the elementary school this year, which is gonna be the first time we've really done that, but it's in all, it goes through all the other media outlets.
We've got it on the internet today.
Yeah, it's on the Tyler Road site, it's in the Facebook, the happenings, anything we can think of, we try to get it out there.
Chamber, you're in the Chamber of Commerce too.
Right.
Okay, good, because I think that attracts people here. I think that attracts tourists here.
Yes, I think so.
I think it does. Jim.
I don't have anything to add, or any questions from it.
59.
No, go ahead, sorry.
The, we don't often have felony arrests reported, we've got three of them in one month, which is for me unusual, and what is even worse is under the arrest, there are three assaults on police.
Yeah.
I don't know, I've never seen that in one of these reports, I mean, I'm sure that the police get assaulted from time to time. Do you want to comment on that?
No. And charged.
No injuries?
Not to the law, no. Not at all. Not at all.
Yeah, no, that's what I was asking.
Is it your, do you have any impression about whether this, there's some tendency for things to be getting a little worse here along these lines, because if you wander around town, things seem to be pretty peaceful.
I mean, you just don't know when that stuff happens, I mean, that data's...
Just, just, just a band-aid.
Soon as one of my guys marked off, they'll mark on, that happens, so.
Yep.
I mean, you just don't know.
Rear park, give us an update on where we are. Are you giving tickets now?
We walked Mason's today, and there, just timed out, and myself. Yes, we started giving tickets Monday, so since Monday, we've been giving nine parking tickets, seven with warnings, and 10 verbal warnings.
Basically gave warnings for five, just warnings for five days prior to...
Yes, when I wrote seven warnings this week, myself.
They have a New Jersey plate, or a New York plate, they don't do this.
Over there, and Virginia, locals.
Are there signs going on?
All the signs are, six signs up.
We're, we're going, we're looking at improving the communication and making this more visible and educating people better, and what other things we might be able to do. We're not out here to make money from parking tickets, this is not what we want to do. So we want to be looking at that over the next few days. As Jim said, Brandon, he and I walked Mason, talked to some of the merchants, we'll be walking, talking to the more of them, and we're gonna figure out a way to make this roll out smoother than it has been. Ask, ask Brandon to roll a sign in and say, reverse parking, something else. That's been suggested, actually, and maybe that's something we can consider, you know, be, have a room for. Great. Okay, Tom. Any other questions?
I got a question. We were talking, Jim and I were talking, the council probably needs to set an ordinance and put this parking, reverse angle parking, in ordinance. Right now, he's writing all his tickets on the Virginia code section and not reverse angle, just wrong direction.
Yep.
It might be, that might be challenged, but I think he's, I think he's doing it under the right code section, but it could be challenged, but it's really not a true wrong direction parking, the car, Virginia code says you must park on the right side of the highway if you want to park. If they were parked straight in, it would still be on the right side of the highway.
That's one of the things we'll consider as part of this.
But that needs to be, we need to put that in ordinance, which we do not have.
Right.
I think we're...
Well, see, we're doing it, we're doing original sand, the ordinance, because we're trying to write parking tickets on there, where traffic sometimes.
Time to go to 4260.
Yes.
That would work us, for right now. I don't know how long it takes to fast forward, but if you want, it's gonna be messy all summer, pulling in and back in, crossing both sides of the traffic, can't see. We got complaints today that they can't, it's hard for people to back in, but you gotta back out once you pull in, so you're backing either way you go, so I mean, I don't know.
It's just different. People are like different things.
Well, it's not something people are used to, this is, it's unusual, I mean, there are plenty of cities around that do this, but it's not in most people's experience to do it on the way to their races.
There are some, there are some good sides to this too, there's a lot of bits to say it's a, it's a traffic calming effect.
It does, someone turns, it becomes a downside, I mean, unless you want to do something.
It does, and that's one of the, that's one of the benefits of VODs, and it says it gives also, that it calms traffic. So yes, the point is, we're working on this, and continue to do that, and we'll make this, we're gonna try to make this right.
I think we fell short in...
Excuse me?
I think we fell short in notifying the citizenry as much as we could.
We did.
A lot of them...
Well, in educating them, yes.
Even letting them know. We, we did some things for those residents of the town, but there are a lot of people who come to town who don't live in the town of Cape Charles, so they don't see the exec, they don't see some of the other things. We need to have a lot more signage, it doesn't have to be in the ground signage, it could be on the windows signage.
Well, and we may even want to put signs on the opposite side of Mason, because that's where people see it better, but we will definitely, we look at that, and we certainly could have done a better job on this than we did.
Might be a good idea to approach VOD and ask them to put a solid yellow line down Mason Avenue in that area rather than the rock line.
That's something we can look at. Any other, come on, ask questions? All right, thank you. And we did, Paul was unable to make it tonight. Do you have any comments on the report there?
No, I didn't have.
If there are questions...
I'd like to ask a question, I'm sure you can answer it. Manhole repair contract, status on that?
I can't answer it, I've been out there for weeks, I don't know where they are, but Dave...
When the contract is awarded, I think it's right for the word.
Yeah, I'm not sure that they could start a work, so, but it had, Dave did put in, he probably saw a draft, that...
Yeah, that would take some explanation.
Yeah, well, it's the, you see the peaks of rain deaths.
Yeah.
And the volume does affect, you know, if the equivalent volume does affect track several days after that, so again, it just should be, we do have to continue to...
10 million a gallon a month.
Come on, sit down. Recreation.
Just wanted to give you guys, we had some discussion about alcohol consumption in the town through the season. When I first started working here, Aqua sponsored ABC training, we had the David Crow come in, and the seal officer, and the former trainees, and he's the special agent, and he's gonna come in, and we got a good response from the restaurants, but that's not our goal, we have a lot of events, we've got our chartered sales, and so we also want to try to get some of our citizens educated with responsible alcohol sales, so we have to reach out to ACC3, and VOD, and the new force, some of the employees, and...
Anyone? You have an awful lot of things planned for the summer, I don't know if everyone wants to hear of all those things. Anything? Anything particularly you'd like to point out?
I'm anxious to see how it works. I think it's been summer, which I tried to split our regular program, most of the time I have to shut that down because I can't keep up. So, we'll keep up with the regular program and then add a lot more outdoor events, you know, we've created Central Park here at this beach, a little concert, it was. And trying to get the tourists, interact with the tourists as well. And I had a discussion with Mr. Neil on vacation, it was called animation.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of resorts have animation department. Angel West, which is a big ski area, is in... They will do things, this is off-season, this is, you know, during the winter, which people assume, off-season, they will do, they let people, they will do things. Street performers and skits or somehow to bring people out in their plazas and that type of thing, so.
Our idea is to grab people off the beach, you know, off the beach for some volleyball or for, you know, some active activities on the beach. That's what the beach activities are generic, but that's what we're hoping to...
This is something that's never been done here before, we're going to be having beach events, beach activities.
Not by snap, you never know. So, sounds exciting. I'm anxious to see how it goes, and I'm always open to suggestions. We're also part of my, what I didn't stress enough, and I hope to touch on when we have the state of the town, if we, if we have questions. Some of us were involved in the citizen advisory committee, and I've been pulling stuff from that. I don't think, I think we just, you know, had the committee, I keep the list, I've got a driver's warrant on it, and it's behind that. And I pulled it down, and it was a long, that kind of book, and, you know, we may have to eliminate some stuff, add some stuff, see what works or doesn't. And so, it's not an accident, it's, it's... I rely on the citizens to tell me what they want. I, I don't want to just give them what I want them to know, to be a part of what's going on.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you. Next item is the public service authority. The, two significant items to note. The, I think I had mentioned previously, the board supervisors at the PSL, it's a, to evaluate the use of baby, what are wastewater treatment system for processing the wastewater from the Southern Oak Commercial Project. The, Hurt the Profit, which is the PSA's contractor, has finished the evaluation. And the system as it is currently configured is unsuitable for that purpose, and it has neither the capacity nor the treatment quality now that's required by the Department of Health to do that. Their estimate is that it would require an upgrade, cost to two-point-three million dollars. And that, that excludes land acquisition, additional land required for greenfield expansion and reserve greenfield. So, that does not compare very well with connection to the Cape Charles wastewater treatment plant. We estimate the pump station and the pipeline would be roughly around seven hundred thousand. So, we hope that is off the table for consideration. That was the first thing that occurred since my last report. The second thing is that we had the third meeting in the PSA Subcommittee, which actually Brown, the councilwoman, attended. We reviewed the first draft of a processing agreement, agreement between PSA and Cape Charles. Agreed on some, I'd say, relatively minor changes relative to periods to, that would form the baseline calculations and that type of thing. The two remaining issues, in my opinion, and I think, I think General Samuel would agree with that, is the surcharge that the PSA and the town agreed to. The town proposed the surcharge according to about twenty-six percent of the baseline cost of treatment. It wasn't expressed that way, it was expressed as one-fifth cents per gallon versus one-point-two cents versus the baseline cost. PSA Board evaluating the value of ten percent surcharge would be more reasonable, so that's going to have to be, go shoot it out. And then the second item, of course, is a connection charge. And PSA Board, it's not believed that a connection charge is appropriate for the initial thirty customers who already have certain fields. And we are evaluating some ways to kind of skin that cat. One of them is to exclude the PSA flow from calculation of case possible, which would raise essentially the rate charge by the town to PSA and allow the town to recover that foregone connection charge quicker. The other idea is for newer, as flow increases above the initial fifteen, twenty thousand gallons, it's to impose a connection charge through the PSA to additional connections as they come along. So, that is where we stand. It's a very complicated issue, obviously. And PSA Board evaluated it Monday night, I just had meetings, I was at town. Talk with the chairman and executive director, find out what their position is at this point. I'm recommending that the tag adds a whole work session, so that we can get into this in some detail. So, the two Cape Charles reps to the Subcommittee can move forward.
You're recommending this process, and just the council people, nobody from the PSA, other than the two reps?
I, I, I think that's probably preferable. It's a public meeting, the, doesn't mean that they couldn't attend.
No, I'm not excluding, but I just, is there anybody else out there that we would benefit from having?
Well, I think, I think, I think the, the two PSA Board reps to the Subcommittee, that's myself and Sean Hager, it might be beneficial to have Sean there also. But I don't know that there's, at this point, I don't think anybody else on PSA Board would be beneficial to you. Yeah, I definitely think we need a work session on this. We have to discuss these proposals and concerns that we have relative to business being drawn out of Cape Charles and how we might avoid that if we go ahead, if we go ahead and do this. So, I really believe we need a work session. I don't know if you have any comments, if anyone has any further comments on this, on what's been said so far. I'm thinking we may be better off to defer most of the discussions to the work sessions itself. Thoughts on this, Sambo?
I mean, I, you know, I don't know, we need the work session.
So, I got the motions, you have a work session. It's second.
Second.
All in favor? We will have a work session.
The work session is scheduled, can you put it in a gem together before we, maybe just kind of discussion points, things that need to be...
Yeah, yeah, and as George says, very complicated, you know, the notion of putting business at a disadvantage. It, it doesn't just get down to the rate, processing rate charge, it's, it's everything that is, is going to go into that rate. We had some discussions on that before. You know, there's collection system maintenance, there's additional taxes that will be there from the service district. So, we'll, we'll go ahead and put that together and put a lot back in, I'm sure we're going to get it out to... Right. The, tentatively, Brandon, Libby and I have talked about having a work session, when it was June fourth, on this topic. So, that's one of our four discussions we've scheduled for. Next is Harvard Development Certificate application.
This is an application for Harvard Development Certificate for number one Mason Avenue, the former North End and Motel. Just been through the Harvard Area Review Board process, the recommendation from the Harvard Area Review Board, the words to approve, and the Harvard Development. Just left the town council on a work session on the fourteenth, and wanted to submit a report, and move now for council action.
I think a motion to be issued a Harvard Development Certificate for one Mason Avenue.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Historic Review Board fee structure.
As part of the budget integration process for this year, the council will work session to see the recommendations from the Historic Review Board on an increase in the initial application fee, as well as some fee from application meeting for plans that have been previously submitted and granted as appropriate. And then also a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar fee for a special meeting necessitated on the part of an applicant, or non-applicant, in the case when the, who has performed boards outside of, appropriate.
I'll have a motion on this.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? We talked about this before, I don't see the need for it, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. The next item is a proposed budget utility, proposed budget and utility rates, we need to schedule a public meeting for this. Budget process, processing the budget together is complete, and now the move to is to bring it to the House and actually vote on it.
What we have before you is a summation of four monthly hard work and all the decisions that you made. The total budget, eight million, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars. This includes three million, three, three million, three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one for capital projects. In the summary of capital projects, which is attached, you'll see that I have brought forward fifty thousand for the purchase of the Strawberry Street Plaza, which was initially scheduled for this year, but we postponed it, so that's the only change this last coming back. So, the total proposed budget for the general fund alone is four million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. General fund revenues, and it's projected at four million, one fifty-eight, and expenditures only projected at four million, fifty thousand, five hundred and fourteen. The surplus of one-hundred-and-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-one will cover the shortfall in the harbor fund, which is due to debt service. Public utilities fund, total expenditures and revenue of one million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, eleven dollars. It's seventy-four thousand higher than in the last fiscal year, that's primarily the increase in wastewater reserves, which is trace work out. It's not any increase in expenses. Harbor fund revenue, projected at one million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven, expenditures projected at two million, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight. Again, that deficit will be covered by general fund surplus. The breakwater project and increased debt service make up the increase over fiscal year fifteen. Sanitation fund revenue expenditures are slightly higher than fiscal year fifteen, and that's just the addition of commercial dumpster. It's a real cost of the town, it's funded by the user. The overall fiscal year sixteen budget is one million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars higher than FY fifteen, with approximately one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand is allocated for contingency fund in town manager's budget, and there was an increase of over a million dollars in capital projects. The utility rates will remain the same as they have for the last two years. There's been just a few cents upward and downward between water and sewer, and waste disposal charges have gone up a little bit. But we're able to keep the overall minimum charge at one-hundred-and-seven dollars, ninety-two cents. Recommendation, are there any questions?
I have a motion to schedule a public hearing on the proposed budget and utility rates. Thank you much.
It's proposed on June fourth.
Is it, yeah, June fourth, correct. Any further discussion on this?
I'd just like to, to thank Debbie for the job she did in putting this together and leading us through it. The seventh time I've been through this, since I've been on council, and it's always a difficult thing, and in my opinion, is the most important thing a council does all year, is get the budget right for the people of town at Cape Charles. And I think, I know you were here last year, but you were drinking from a firehouse at that one time, so. I just wanted to compliment you on, on the professionalism, how well you did it, and how well informed you kept us through the process. And you did a great job, and very happy that we have a balanced budget, and I think we owe a lot of that to your hard work.
Thank you, we all work together in all the departments and the bottom, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Debbie. And the last, this might be the last. Charter Communications Comcast Corporation merger termination.
Frank, you want to take us through that? To Libby, you want to go with me through that?
Sure. Excuse me. Just to give you the background, I guess in two thousand and fourteen, council passed a resolution to include the transfer of the cable franchise from Charter to Comcast as part of the merger agreement between the two entities. Transfer consent is executed, pro stipulation, cite a paragraph eight of the original non-exclusive franchise agreement granted by council in two thousand and one. As far as discussion there, these second letters were received from Comcast Corporation and Charter Communications notifying the town of the termination of the merger agreement between the two entities. And Comcast has withdrawn the FCC Form 394 filing, copies of that are attached, the council will agree. Light the combination resolution two zero one four zero nine one eight A, which granting the transfer consent needs to be sent. The recommendation, light the merge combination, please the state, sending the resolution. Transfer consent, that will...
Let me read this first, I'm not going to read the whole resolution. What I would like is a motion to adopt resolution number two zero one five zero five two one, rescinding resolution two zero one four zero nine one eight A, which consented to the transfer, to transfer the Charter Communications cable franchise transfer to Comcast Corporation as noticed and to forego reading of the resolution. I have a motion for that.
We have a motion in a second.
In a second.
We need a roll call vote because we're doing a resolution.
Right, so is there any further discussion on this? No, I'll have a roll call vote.
The tally, yes.
Then, yes.
Done, yes.
Brian, yes.
Motion is carried. Very much.
Mr. Mayor, would you make a note that we started out with five council members, we only had four voting on the resolution, where Tom's not here?
Can I follow up on a question on, say that, there are two people left. And we have, you know, is the... The meeting, the meeting has to stop. So, comments from council, gentlemen? Well, with the rear end backing in, I am selling this proposal. No, we can sell our walkout slots across the street.
You gonna put that, you gonna put that in the wings?
Steve?
I don't have any, thank you.
I don't have any, wish everybody a happy holiday.
And a safe holiday.
Absolutely. I'm going to... Excuse me?
In the morning service time.
I have the Monday morning, ten a.m.
Yeah, I see it. So, I have just, just one or two comments, and then I'll read the, the announcements. Again, have a happy Memorial Day, and be safe and have fun, but let's remember why we're celebrating Memorial Day in the first place, and I hope everyone will attend Memorial Day service at, at eleven, it's eleven fifteen after we, that's what it was changed to, it's at eleven o'clock, you'd be there, and it'll be fine. As far as the reverse angle parking is concerned, we're not always going to get things exactly right, but if we do things that aren't, aren't, that don't turn out quite as well as they should have, we're gonna work to make them, to fix them, or to make them better, and to train people, in this particular case, to teach people what they need to do. I'll read you the announcements, these are, these are dates, they're coming up. Town offices are closed on May 25th, an observation of Memorial Day. May 26th, I have my office hours from six to seven here at the Civic Center. May 30th and 31st is the Bike MS, Virginia's Ocean to the Bay Ride. May 30th, we're gonna have State of the Town beginning at ten o'clock, this is something that we have not done before, that we're gonna give it a try, to sort of review what we've done over the past year for citizens, any citizens who wish to come. Staff can be here as well to answer some questions. May 30th is also the Benefit of the Day, starting at six. May 30th and 31st again is the, is the Bike MS, Virginia's Ocean to the Bay Ride. June 4th is the council, Town Council Work Session, which starts at 6:00 PM, which we just talked about. June 6th is Clean the Bay Day, and Spiny will be looking for people to join him to, to help with that event. June 11th is a Town Council Work Session at six. June 13th will be the dedication of the King Neptune Maquette, you know, that'll be a ceremony at ten o'clock. This is a, a seven-foot statue that is a duplicate of the very large statue in Virginia Beach, and this was, this was one of the models that was used to make that, that Neptune statue that's in Virginia Beach, it's been donated to us. And I think this is very exciting, because we're trying to have an arts walk in here, and so gradually, we are getting some things that will draw people's attention, and will, will make the town that much more attractive. So, we'll have, with the love sign, we have the dolphin, and now we're gonna be adding a, a Neptune statue. June 13th and 14th is the Tall Ships, and June 18th is the town, next Town Council regular meeting at six. And that's all I have, thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you very much.